All right. Good morning and welcome to the August 17th, Joint Concord Carlisle, Concord School Committee's meeting. I want to thank all of our members, committee members, who managed to, I know this is a difficult time, and some of you are on the road afar. And thank you for being here, taking some time from delivering children to school and vacations and all that. So I'd like to take a roll call for the Concord Carlisle School Committee. And would you like to open up the Concord?
Yes, roll call for Concord as well.
And I want to note that this meeting is being recorded.
Correct.
All right, Anderson present.
Who's present?
Morano present.
Rainie present for both.
And Wilson present for region. Thank you. Before we begin our public comment, we just want to take a moment to welcome Debbie Dixon, our interim sped director, who will be joining us. We wanted to introduce, give you a moment to introduce yourself to the community.
Could she join us here?
Yeah.
I didn't warn her.
Oh, come on up Debbie. We're sorry. Sorry, I put you on the spot. Would you like to take a moment to welcome yourself to the conference room?
Sit there for that moment, I think.
Is that a good moment?
So I'll give Debbie a minute to settle in and just say how glad we are Debbie's here. She's jumped in willingly and kind of pretty last minute to support us for the year as interim Director of Student Services. She's been here a day. So don't ask anything too grilling as of yet. This will be a nice bridge from Ruth Grooby to whoever's next for us in a year and help us, you know, have the time to do the search properly. Debbie comes with a really deep level of experience, having just left two years of interim at AB prior to that Dover Sherburne and then before retirement. And Franklin in Sudbury, you see, she's one of those that doesn't retire well. So we're really, really glad to have her. She's going to clearly hit the ground running and really serve us well for the next year. So welcome.
Thank you. Say everything I would have said. I'm delighted to be here. I'm honored to be here. And I really look forward to working with you on behalf of the students, families, staff, to work through this interim year and get ready for the following year. And set you up for success, continued success for the students here in Concord and for Concord Carlisle.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you everyone here. You've been so lovely and welcoming. It's been a day.
Yeah. Glad we're off to at least that good stuff.
Great.
So yeah, we do welcome you. The very fact that you're here is one sign that we're in transition. So we have high hopes, high expectations, and we hope to match that with a great deal of support for you.
Thank you.
But you were awesome.
Thank you.
So Debbie, we won't keep you. We can go back to settling in. We're glad you were able to stop over.
I have a lot of feeding to do.
I bet you do.
So thank you. It was nice to meet you all.
Yes, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll return to our public comments section. Before we begin public comments, just a few notes. One is, as we always know, this is a school committee meeting in the public, not with the public. So we welcome and encourage questions, comments, thoughts, and all that, but we will not necessarily engage in a dialogue during the open comments. However, we will be hosting a public forum regarding school, return to school plans that will be next Tuesday night at 7:00 PM. And we encourage you to, either comment will be a webinar format, so you'll have a chance to type in your questions, or you can email your questions in advance to the Concord Carlisle or Concord School Committee through our website links. And we hope that we'll be able to address everybody's questions at that time. But for now, if anyone has any public comments, please raise your hand in the Zoom. Who's going to be?
Aaron, can Aaron CD.
Okay.
And you can sit up.
Either, yeah, raise your hand through Zoom or raise your hand in person or? Yes.
Hi, my name's Ashley Healy. I'm our.
And please, please, please give your name and your address.
Thank you.
My name's Ashley Healy. I'm at 778 Jonathan Concord and parents. Hello, public. I'm just here. Of the proposed mask policy, just want to express support for it and thank fellow elementary school parents who I know are feeling similarly that we would like to see our kids on masks when school starts in these. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Do we have any members of the remote audience raising hands? We do. I see someone. I see some videos. Do you know the name of the?
Person with hand raised.
Hand raised.
Yep, Bob Bonadie.
Bob Bonadie.
Yeah, I hope you can hear me. Robert Bonadie, 72 Finnegan Way. Really, first, a technical comment. It's very hard to hear what the words are being said in the room. So I hope that there'll be a transcript or something that everyone can follow along better. And also, just a clarifying question you can answer now or later, but I didn't get all the details on the meeting next Tuesday. So I assume that there'll be a notice sent out for that.
It's going to go out today when the protocols go.
Okay, yeah. So it'll be next Tuesday, 7:00 PM webinar format. Questions can be submitted in advance or in live. And there will be a link sent out later today.
So I guess just to follow up on that. So when you say webinars, is there going to be Q and A and dialogue?
Because it's the webinar.
What's it going to be more?
Yeah, because it's the webinar format, we can either promote people to become panelists or they can do it through the Q and A and type the questions in and we'll answer them. We have to go with the webinar when we're not sure how many people will show up because the meeting formats can cap out. So absolutely, there'll be Q and A.
Thank you.
Welcome. And is the, is the audio better now?
It's okay. It's still a little bit echoey. I just think that people that are on Zoom, it's very clear when someone's on Zoom. Like I heard Bob really loud and clear, and it's a little bit from the background from you guys.
Okay.
We will, we will do our best from this room.
Are there other questions? No? No? Okay. With that, we'll move on to the reading of the minutes from the open session joint meeting from June 8, 2021. And I have a motion to accept the minutes.
So for both. Both committees.
There are second.
I'll second.
Next roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Special discussion.
Just thank, thanks for the corrections. Correction, just one small one. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Aaron.
All right.
Roll call.
Anderson, I for both.
Who's I for both?
Morano, I for both.
Mustafi, I for region.
Rainie, I for both.
Wilson for region. Thank you. Correspondence. I have not received any correspondence through the Concord Carlisle.
Did you get my test?
I got the test. You have stated digital test.
I was just questioning about how to access this thing.
Yes.
Okay. Am I just a?
Am I just a Hunter? I did not check that. I should have.
And other than that, from Concord? Nothing?
No.
Okay, so we can move on to discussion. COVID protocols, August 2021. Here we are.
So Dr. Hunter suggested that we reverse the first two.
Okay.
Just to make more sense to have the face mask policy clarified and then the rest of the protocols.
Okay.
Does that, does that sound?
They're so interconnected.
Yes.
And before we do that, I just want to introduce some of the folks with us on Zoom. Our health leaders, Tricia McIan is here as our public health nurse. Lisa Kosky is here as our K-12 pre-K H-22 lead nurse in the school district. And Susan Rask is the Concord Health Director. And they have been meeting with us regularly in the last few weeks and are here to support us during the conversation of our plans on how to bring school back.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us for all of your work over the past.
18 months.
How many years?
We're getting up there now.
Okay, so we have, we looked at our face covering policy from last year. And Cynthia and I discussed that we should probably revise it somewhat to better reflect our current situation. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to review the proposed language of the new policy. And we hope that it, it gives us the right balance of supports and assurances through this year and latitude to, you know, adjust this as we need to. Are there any questions from school committee members about this? Or Lauren, would you like to?
Yeah, it might be helpful just to summarize the biggest takeaways, in case anyone hasn't looked at it, or the public listening. We are proposing a policy that has everyone in face masks to open school, including grade seven through 12 where students are highly vaccinated. That's out of an abundance of caution for not being totally able to predict the Delta variant in the schools, given its, you know, fairly recent recurrence. That, and clearly, we're going to mask the elementary K-6 kids that are not vaccinated. And I expect that will remain in place until the vaccine is available. Seven through 12, we're leaving with a plan to ongoing check in on how things are. Get our own data in front of us. I think that was a big part of our conversation with the health leaders was let's get our local data like we did last year and really understand with the masks, what that is going to, you know, look like in the schools and what the impact is. And so we are very much wanting to revisit that because if comfort grows and we feel that the vaccine is doing its job across the wide ranging percentage of kids, and we have that health data to show most of our kids are vaccinated, we may be able to pull back or lift the mask requirement as the year goes on. So I think that's the largest takeaway. A lot of the rest is procedural. And any ways to opt out, of which we've had very little of the last year plus. So I don't expect that to be a big issue.
And I just want to discuss, this is for all individuals in all school buildings.
Yes.
So it's for visitors, for staff, faculty, students alike.
Yes.
Everyone. Yep.
Regardless of vaccination status, at least to start with.
And we will be reviewing this every, every two weeks.
Yeah, I think our plan is to put it on the agenda every time we meet with you and talk on our way.
Okay. Great. Are there any questions on this?
Unfortunately, yes. I don't want to stir things up. This is difficult enough for everybody involved. And the compliance on everybody's part for well over a year has been exceptional. And these schools have been able to stay open as a result. And that's our continued goal. However, I want to put you on the spot, Dr. Hunter, or our health experts in the room. We don't call out what masks are acceptable here, do we not? So we leave it up to sort of building judgment. If something seems to be really deficient, then we'd offer a better surgical mask. Is that practically what would happen?
I'll let them weigh in, and I'll just remind you that last year, right as we opened, we did not allow the gators to come in and insisted that it be a face mask. So I, do you want to weigh in, Tricia or Susan? Would you want us to continue that?
Yes, I think we should steer clear of gators and use either a cloth face mask or a surgical mask.
So perhaps reinsert the language. Do we have it in there from last year?
Yeah, we can pull it from what we put in last year.
I think it's a great suggestion.
Yep. Thank you for it.
Well, I think it simply makes it easier for people. We're not trying to be onerous. We're trying to be simple and clear.
Right. And we had 100% compliance with that last year. We were not, we were not in any discussions with people insisting otherwise.
In court, just to say that all of the school buildings, we have quite a few extra masks. And if kids broke a mask, or if they were soiled or wet, or simply forgot, they came to the health office. And staff were very good about directing them to come down and get one.
And Jared's making sure we're well stocked again, still. At one point of clarification that we didn't mention, we will be insisting on masks on the school buses. That's a given as well.
And that's addressed when you reopen.
It is, yes.
Return to school.
Yes.
Protocols. Okay. If there are no more comments about the policy, we'll revisit this later. I don't know. There's a vote on later. So there's a vote on it later, but are we going to vote? Do we change the language right now and vote on amended? Or do we vote on something and then revise one at our next meeting?
You could vote on it based on the recommendation made at the meeting.
Yeah. Okay, great. Can you share with us your protocols?
I.
I just, one more. It's minor. But there's a few more references in the MASC model policy that I think we should insert. Yeah, they have the two we have, and then there's a couple more. Mass health.
So great, thank you.
Awesome.
There's no shortage of resources continuing to come out every day here for it. So I'll shift gears here to go to the protocol document that is attached to the agenda. And I'm going to, I was going to hit these at a very high level, but we can certainly stop at any point, talk on them in more depth. Most of this is going to sound very familiar. And I think we felt really confident that we were pulling back processes and protocols that we know how to do with great confidence and are very accustomed to and very routine. So clarifying that those routines are essentially largely staying the same, I think, is much of the message this morning. Distancing, we are going to be looking to aim for three feet where possible. We want to just give ourselves that room to feel like we spread kids out and have some conscious level of that. We will at lunch be spreading, spacing them, whether at desks or at the cafeteria tables, with outdoor eating being the primary plan. The elementary schools, we've actually got tents sufficient for all of them to eat outside every day that the weather permits. And at the middle and high schools, we've got sufficient tents like we did last year to really have as many of them outside as we can, and then allow for lots of space for those who are indoors. Hygiene would continue with hand washing and sanitizer routines like we had last year. Cohorting and assigned seating. We are considering still the elementary classrooms are cohort, which will be important when I get to a quarantine discussion. It minimizes their cross work with other classes in the building. And we also will be assigning seats in classrooms, all classrooms, and assigning seats on the bus. The buses will be running at full capacity, which is certainly a change, one of the few changes from last year. Screening, we are going to reinstate the symptom screener through Aspen. And just a little rationale why Aspen, I know it's a little clunky, but what it does on the backside for the main offices and nurses, it populates automatically who has not completed it and allows us a lot of tools to follow up and communicate. It also builds in those automatic reminders that if you miss it, you know, kind of get bombarded with email and a text and such. So that will stay in place as it was last year.
Lori?
Yes?
Can I interject about the screener? I figured out in like April, how to use a tab on Aspen. It specifically works fantastic on the phone where there's a tab called Forms, and you hit it, and it's a one question, yes or no. Does your child have symptoms? As opposed to when you use the full site? I think it's a, Tracy, you'll probably remember, like a four step process. It might be worth our while to like give a little, like a tutoring, like training, or I don't know. I could figure out, I could show you guys how to do it. It saved me an awkward amount of time every morning, like in the most fabulous way. So just something, and I don't think most people know about it.
Yeah, no, we can definitely have IT put some direction.
And maybe you're, we can quickly.
Sure.
Get a little walkthrough.
Yeah. Yep. Thanks, Alexa. Obviously, if there are symptoms, we're going to be asking people to stay home like last year and get tested. Our hope and expectation is the testing process is much more accessible than it was in certain points last year, and negative tests can be acquired fairly quickly and get kids back to school. If there is a positive COVID test, we're going to be working with the nurses and the health leaders. We will be close contact tracing as we have been with a distance of six feet. And working through the elementary schools, we will be quarantining the entire classroom as we did. That was very effective, and we know it minimized spread during what we had at Alcott, where we had transmission at school. It's important to note, and I think this will minimize quarantine significantly for the older kids. If you are vaccinated, you do not need to quarantine unless you are symptomatic. So that is a big difference going into this year and should really minimize the number of kids out of school. We are moving to the seven day quarantine option that DPH offers, coming down from the 10. You'll remember we came down from the 14 last year. We've grown in confidence as to the amount of time required for diagnoses to happen. We are shifting because we are full time in person. We are pulling back from Zoom access. So quarantine kids will be receiving asynchronous work when they are home. Teachers will be prioritizing concepts and workloads so that they're not overwhelmed with the asynchronous work. Again, we expect the older kids not to be highly quarantined because of the vaccine. So part of that is the balance. If an entire elementary class is quarantined, we will be supporting them remotely since they're all at home. If an individual is quarantined, then it still will be asynchronous. We expect to need a day if a whole class is quarantined to distribute devices because you'll remember last year, kids had them at home. This year, they do not. And we are not planning on distributing them one to one. So we'll need a day to do that turnaround. We are going to participate in the state's pre-pool testing process. So we're gearing up to go get those routines back, and parents should watch for more information. We're aligning with the travel guidance coming from the DPH and CDC, which does not require testing upon return to the state. Transportation, we mentioned the mask. Kids will be sitting two at a seat. So distance is much smaller than the six feet we were in midpoints last year. Windows will be open, buses will be cleaned. We will be assigning seats, which probably is one of our greatest challenges on the bus. Cleaning protocols aren't changing. From last year, we'll be spraying down every night. High volume spaces will get wiped down. We will be having kids wipe their seats in classrooms as we did last year. We're really excited to continue to promote outdoor usage, especially in these early fall months, whether it be lunch, but also otherwise. And one of the benefits of un-zooming ourselves is teachers aren't so tethered to the laptop and the wireless connection. So I think it will free them up to the outdoors more. We are looking to reopen the schools after student hours to community groups. So that, that process is back in place through the online portal. Through Jared's office, they'll be screening that groups need to abide by our COVID protocols, wear masks. We're going to watch group size and obviously not large, large groups in the buildings. But we're glad to make the community use back available again. Visitors, we're trying to find a little progress here. We, we do want parents to be able to access the main office, nurses' office when needs come up. So that is going to be available. We are not looking for parents to make their way all the way to classrooms and minimize exposures there for lots of good reasons that are both, where we were planning on, even if COVID had stayed, stayed down. IP meetings and teacher conferences are going to be held remotely. I think that's a long term takeaway of COVID is that level of accessibility being, being an option going forward. This year, we're going to do it exclusively. And I continue to talk about whether we stick to exclusively or make it optional once we're out of the COVID era here. We are not going to host large group events inside. We're going to be virtual for the time being. I'll be in the back to school. And open house events that happen in September are all going to be virtual. So watch for Zoom links to go out on those. Right now, the health leaders are supporting us on outdoor events continuing forward. We're going to take those on a case by case basis and look at the data, the numbers. But we're trying to go forward with little or no restrictions. More to come as those, any events come up. Outdoor athletics, as the athletic season gets underway, we'll run without restriction. We are making our way just to tidy a little bit of the details up on the indoor athletics, which at the high school is volleyball and cheer. The music program, we're, you know, fine tuning a little bit there. We are desperately eager to get our music programs back on track. It probably took one of the most significant hits of COVID than anything else with the lack of playing. So it's three safety protocols. We do expect at the secondary level to allow the woodwind and brass instruments to play again and some singing. Elementary, right now, we're going to hold, go slower there. Those specialists see 400 kids a week in person. So they thought they're going to, you know, not jump right into vocal work immediately till we get a sense of the virus. But there'll be lots of great live music going on, which we're excited to bring back. As you remember, the music of other specialist programs were remote all year at the elementary schools last year. And finally, we're excited to get students on field trips again on a case by case basis. We actually have a lot of outdoor trips in the fall, which we're thrilled to get back on track. And obviously, the trips will have to align with our COVID protocols at the time and safety measures. So that's where we are right now. It's come together and seemed quite nicely over the last couple of weeks with a lot of input from the health leaders. I've been working with the teacher associations and a wonderful collaboration there and with all of you.
Great. Thank you. Are there questions from school committee members? Alexa? And then Teresa?
I have a quick question. Just, I haven't read it anywhere specifically. Will the pooled testing still be of no charge to families and students?
The state is sponsoring the pool testing, the asymptomatic pool testing. So we're expecting that they continue to do that.
Thanks.
And I had a couple of questions on testing. It might be helpful, I think, that many of us were on the receiving end of your child needs to be tested, just like a list of where to go for tests. What do you do, just to make it easier, even from the nurse's perspective? If there was some type of document, where do you go? How long does it take? Because I think that there are some rapid PCR tests. There are some regular PCR tests just to get a sense of how long it's going to be. Even our pediatricians went from three days to one day. So that just might be helpful for parents. And then I had a question on the pool testing for vaccinated students in seven through 12. So when I looked at the DESI guidelines, it looks like they're not recommending that. But I was unclear on that. Maybe I read it wrong. So are you recommending everyone to go pool testing?
Please, do you want to answer that?
Sure. No, I think, Tracy, as far as I understood it, they are recommending that everyone pool tests, Sure. Um no, I think Tracy, as far as I understood it, they are recommending that everyone will test, even if you're vaccinated. Yep. So um each building will have a different schedule um with the nurses on what day they're going to do it. So the nurses um will let you know. I know at the high school, it's going to be Tuesday and Thursdays.
Alexa.
Thanks. Um it might be helpful, and I don't know who might be charged with doing this. Um Lisa, Trish, Susan, um I think it could be confusing to parents and students, parents of vaccinated students and students um about why they would want to participate in the pooled testing. I was a huge fan of it. Um all my kids participated. Um but I know in order for it to be really effective, we want if and even need high numbers of participation. So I didn't know if there was maybe something we could draft so that to sort of create the compelling case as to why. Because I do, and maybe I'm overreacting, I do get concerned that it might be not intuitive to parents as to why they would put their kids in this program if they are in fact vaccinated. That's just a suggestion. We don't have to take it, but I think it could be helpful.
I think that's a great segue to offer Trisha Minna to share some of the data she's seeing locally. You have that right in front of you, Trish, because I know you compiled yesterday, the last five or six weeks for it.
Yep. Do you have that document? Do you want to share that, Lori?
Uh why don't you start talking and I'll pull it up.
Hi, everyone. So uh I'm the public health nurse for Concord, Lincoln and Carlisle. And um Lori's going to be pulling up a document where I um broke all the cases down that I've been working on since July 1st through yesterday for the three towns and the age breakdown and the vaccination status. I think what's interesting and not really interesting because the under 12s are not vaccinated is the curve of positive cases. You know, a year ago was it went up as the ages went on. So in Concord, since July 1st, we've had 19 kids under the age of 12 test positive. Which is a lot. Um and as the ages go on, you will see the breakdown. So Concord has had, actually, I just got six more cases this morning. We're up to 65 cases since July 1st. Of that, actually, I'm going to use the number from yesterday because I haven't looked at the vaccination status of my new cases. We've had 59 cases since July 1st. Um of that 40, 40 of them were fully vaccinated. 19 were not able to be vaccinated because well, so that's that's um pretty significant. In Carlisle, we've had six cases since July 1st. Four are fully vaccinated. And in Lincoln, 20 cases since July 1st and 17 were fully vaccinated. Here's my chart. So look at that top line. So you can see the age breakdown of the positive cases per age group and how it's a backwards curve, right? 19 kids and eight in the 12 to 20 and so on and so on. And I will have this updated for next Tuesday for parents because I think this is compelling, right?
Yeah.
Um the good news is I've had a couple of people with pretty moderate to severe illness. Um and uh the rest have mild symptoms, mild cold-like symptoms. We did have a cluster a couple of weeks ago of eight positive kids, all really good friends, all in summer camps, all game together, parents or friends. Of those eight kids, six were asymptomatic, two, six were asymptomatic, two were symptomatic. And it took out, you know, summer camps and whatever. So because this age group, and these were nine, 10, 11 year olds, this age group is vaccinated. Um it's um it's of concern going into the school year. So anything we can do to mitigate the risk of the spread of this virus, which they are now equating to the transmissibility of chickenpox, we need to do. So someone said, wearing a mask is not that big of an ask, and I think that's true, right? Is it going to stop everything? No, but um given these numbers, especially the vaccinated groups. It 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 is showing us that we've got some work to do going into the fall. My Lincoln group, see, I got a lot of kids in my 21 to 30 year old um age group. I'm seeing a lot of those. So um that's about all I have to share, and I'll update those numbers for next Tuesday as well.
Thank you. That's all. Very helpful.
And are those numbers going to go back onto um the district website? Because I do think that was totally helpful last year that we had all of those numbers.
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah.
Yes.
And I have a try. I will try to do that the way I was doing last fall. We we stopped doing it over the winter when the case numbers went up so high and we just got simply overwhelmed with work and and couldn't pull the numbers together every week. But I agree. I think it's helpful to have everyone understand the situation.
And I have a follow up question for for our nurse. Uh out of uh out of those uh numbers that you're seeing, people are getting tested and um numbers are getting reported. Is it because they they had symptoms and they got tested? Um because that would really speak to the um usefulness of COVID pool testing in schools.
So it was kind of mixed. So some were symptoms and some were contacts.
But I think the fact that the con that many of the contacts were asymptomatic but positive really does speak to the need for pool testing. Since we don't know how infectious those people are who are asymptomatic but positive, we really e- even DPH is struggling with that. How infectious are those people? Like, we're fairly sure that people who are symptomatic and positive are infectious. We just don't know very much about people who are asymptomatic.
Thank you. And I just want to add that's that's regardless of vaccination.
So one of the one of the many things that's sobering about this that supports all of your concerns is when we first heard about breakthrough, we thought those were the outliers. And now we know that the the opposite is true. That's that's the norm now is cases are going to be uh among folks who are vaccinated. I'd like to note that uh our protocols don't reference vaccination uh recommendations. Uh I think we need to be ready for that conversation next week.
Can I just say something to that court?
Yes.
I think it's important for people to realize that vaccination does matter. I mean, vaccination is very, very effective, and we certainly want people to be vaccinated. Um DPH says that the percentage of breakthrough cases is 0.23%. So a quarter of a percent. So that's something like one in 400 people who are fully vaccinated will become, you know, can get a breakthrough infection. But that's the entire pool of vaccinated people, many of whom are still being very careful about where they go, not going into group settings. So I think a lot of who is vaccinated and gets infected comes down to behavior. Are you going to get crowded indoor settings or aren't you? Um but of course, school is a more crowded indoor setting. So a a lot of it, I you know, y- you can look at the overall percentage, but then I think that what the data shows us is that people who have been in very close situations like kids playing together or the outbreak in Provincetown where people were in bars and restaurants. It's it's people's behavior accounts for many of those cases of the breakthrough infections.
Yeah, thank you. And 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 that's just uh reaffirming our our approach that uh this is manageable through through our practices.
Yes.
What I'm hearing you say, Susan. Thank you. I've got a couple of others.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're lucky that we live in a community where last year, everybody really, really worked hard to to try to mitigate it as much as possible and and very much appreciation from our part on that.
I wonder if I might uh ask us to speak to the reference to school buses at full capacity. Uh that would imply every seat occupied. I don't think that's what we mean. I I wonder if you could.
So and Jared can pop in. Essentially, we're running our routes as we normally would pre-COVID um with the modifications based on the protocols. But what is different is the seating capacity last year. Um we were not putting every child on the bus and with enormous help from the parent community, we had about 50% or so on being transported through, you know, parent driving and drop off. This year we are not, but we're not asking parents for that level of help. We're going to load the buses up as we would in a pre-COVID era and open the windows and put masks on the kids. And so back to normal in terms of capacity with all the COVID measures around it.
All right. So the potential is there for full?
It could be a full bus. It could be. A lot of our runs may not be at the capacity because of the length and distance of the run, but it could if it's one of those few that are.
And if I turn to travel, uh I I understand that uh we're following DPH and CDC. Nonetheless, I'm not comfortable with the declaration that testing is not required after travel. I I I'd be more comfortable if this district could recognize an exception and say, yeah, for that trip, they were at a hotspot or there was an event. Um uh and indeed, we are going to expect uh testing for that group that departed Concord to Carlisle and returned. I just want you to have the room to do that without fussing with this simple declarative statement that we're not going to do it because there could not be exceptions that would give us pause.
So that the only reason that makes you think Monday, we do Monday pool testing with the intent to try to capture that weekend activity or that, you know, maybe even Friday. So it's just something to consider. I know we're hard into the Tuesday, Thursday, but Monday you just get your uh you might not, they might not be positive until, you know, Thursday or yes.
I just want you comfortable with the capacity.
Yeah, I'll be honest, it was one of the most challenging things to enforce last year because it's a combination of disclosure and in high level of inconvenience. And I I think it's one of the most challenging to enforce. And that was with state and federally declared hotspots, which no longer exist exactly that way. Certain international travel will have that, but most of the domestic does not. I I think it would be hard for us to put judgments on hotspots and say, Concord thinks this is a setting you need to get testing back. If there was one protocol, we got the most pushback on it, was the testing after travel. Um so I hear your point, Court. I totally do. I'm just not quite sure how to go about it without state and federal guidance lining up.
And I and 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 as was noted before, a lot is is behavior and and areas that people choose to to enter, right? And so you could enter a hotspot in Massachusetts if you, you know, in a bar just as easily. Or you could fly to a state that has a high um illness, you know, ha- high positivity. But you stay in a in a fairly contained environment without a lot of exposure. So it's very hard to manage, I think.
It was very hard.
Well, that that is why public health authorities have much more power than most citizens understand because of the uh the the nature of their work and their mandate. So I simply want to know here that uh I I want to make sure this administration has the capacity to make make good judgment calls and not be constrained by our own policies. You you've got our support.
Thank you. Yeah, and I could, I I see what you're saying, but there's just so many scenarios. And when, you know, uh a family can be in Concord and be a much riskier private situation than a family traveling.
Agreed.
Um a plane travels, obviously, but with masks, um you know, I think. And it goes both ways. I had a number of families saying, we literally drove to the house in New Hampshire and didn't leave. And now we have to test and we were probably safer than the people, you know, going and moving around Concord. We, it's just a lot of variables to figure out.
Yeah, and I'm content with what we haven't perhaps emphasized enough here, and that is that we're going to revisit this.
Yes, every meeting. So if we can certainly adjust. Yeah.
Pardon?
There's a raised hand.
There's a raised hand. We are not in the middle of public comment right now. Um but I will just remind everybody, if you've just joined us, that next Tuesday, we'll be having a public forum that will give everyone an opportunity to ask questions and engage in um in more conversation about uh our, you know, COVID protocols for the return to school.
And I also say that anybody who would like to send us questions or comments to the school committee mail address the form on the website, please do so. I think that'd be very helpful so we can be prepared to answer that question or address the comment.
Yes, a quick question. Um uh Dr. What can we do to promote um students to enroll in the uh voluntary pool testing at the high school? Because we have very high um uh vaccination rates. Um and to Court's point, you know, people travel, people uh go places, people go out to restaurants, go out to bars, go to weddings. It's a, we're definitely in height uh seasons of uh weddings that were put on halt. Uh there are no travel restrictions anywhere. Um there's no requirement for unvaccinated people to be tested if they are uh asymptomatic. So what can we do to promote students um uh to participate? Because that that is a definitely a helpful um uh protocol.
I'll let Lisa join me here in a minute. My first response is making sure they understand if you're vaccinated, you're, it's your get out of quarantine card. I, most of what we heard last year was the resistance to the testing was the fact you might get quarantined. Uh maybe because your pool was was positive, but even if you were individually positive. Um so now, if you're vaccinated, the only way you end up in quarantine is if you're actually the positive individual. So I think that's a big informational piece we want to be sure we're sharing. Lisa, do you have other things you want to add to that?
Yeah, no, I agree, Lori. And actually, Eva, I was going to reach out to Ariana again. Um so for those of you that don't know Eva, um it's daughter Ariana is a student of ours and she reached out to us. Hopefully she doesn't mind that I'm giving her a little public shout out here. Um in the spring, um asking the nurses if we'd be willing to do a little uh blurb about the benefits of pool testing. And she put a great video together that all of the advisories um were shown um in a weekly advisory, um just trying to promote, you know, participation in pool testing. So I would love to reach out to her again if she would be interested. And maybe we could do an updated version, um you know, that says, even though you're fully vaccinated, we still want you to pool test.
We are mandating testing with the athletes again like we did last spring. That was very successful and I think uh eliminated uh some issues that we had during the winter season where we were quarantining whole teams. Um we went to close contact to contact tracing and testing, and I think that felt like a really productive step forward while we monitored the virus. So. And maybe it doesn't need to be part of this, but if the coaches and the athletic director could remind students who are carpooling, I know it seems like a lot, but to wear a mask when they're together, because I know there was numerous cases of transmission when kids are carpooling from practices and such.
Uh just one last question. Uh we had a a letter and uh a pledge, right, uh sent out uh beginning of the year. Are we updating that pledge?
We haven't talked about that. It's it's worth discussion. Um I guess it's a committee must have given direction that that you think that's valuable. It is some logistical work on our part, but doesn't mean it's not worth it. We want to build that so we can easily account for it. Um you'll remember last we started with a contract that uh parents and kids, especially the older kids, signed off on their commitment to the protocols. I'm hoping to the FICA. From what I've seen, I looked, I did a little looking. Most colleges are not having those pledges anymore because they're pretty much just mess in inside, you know, that's the, unless we have other, a lot of other behaviors that we're expecting, and it's not clear cut. Mask wearing. I haven't seen the pledge in a long time. Yeah, we haven't pulled it up since last fall. So I couldn't really comment today. I'm going to pull it up and we'll give it a review and then. Maybe next meeting we could talk. Just uh the trick is we don't meet against after school starts, so I'll share it out with you all and then work with Lisa to decide if we'll go forward.
I think next week, we simply indicate that it's under conversation and under discussion.
Yeah, I think it's a much more valuable, in my opinion, to have really strong messaging at each site. At the middle school, the seven, eight, and the high school about how to keep the community safe. And that means keeping people in school.
And, and I think the symptom screener reminds people of, of just the importance of everything.
Yeah. You know, we might be able to do a middle ground and, you know, push the contract out and then have the advisories give it a review, especially middle and high school, so that it's a live document and not just another signature. We'll find a middle there, Eva, if we need to, it'll be worthwhile.
Does that put us in a position of equivocating next week? Do we want to avoid that?
I personally find that a one-time sign off and it's two weeks, a week later, it's sort of like, you know, I think a sort of a constant conversation about if we see problems, picking up on those and targeting them and having a.
Right. Last year, it was a means of sharing information people have never had before. So much is familiar, and this year, I think, we can include it as a reminder, but maybe not go through the exercise of the signatures.
And I also feel like, and I know if there are no consequences, for example, for not signing it, and there are no specific consequences outlined in the document for violating any of the provisions inside of it, I'm not sure if it's a lot of work and a lot of administrative work. To Sarah's point, I think it's somewhat duplicative with the symptom screener. And to Lori's point, we are all so familiar, and we really had a tremendously high level of compliance. To me, it seems unnecessary.
Last year, we could tell people the kids were not going to be in-person learning. We don't have that happen this year. Tell, they have to be remote, so if you're looking for a consequence, there is none other than chasing people for process.
I would agree with that. I'm not really sure, you know, what we would do if we're not going to, if there are consequences.
And I think you're referencing changing, you know, links to, to CDC and DPH guidelines as those evolve, you know, which I, I think is, I mean, we're not going to need to rework the, the document on, on some of those. We may need to revisit the messaging based on changes there, but at least we have flexibility to dial up, dial down.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's a good point, also, yeah.
Yeah, the place that I've seen, I've seen those pledges, those contracts in colleges had to do with if you were unvaccinated and there was a mandate to, for all the students and the faculty to test, and there were consequences listed than if you did not follow the protocol. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at the example that I have in front of myself because a relationship of my child going to that particular school. And also, consequences for students not masking, all students not masking in the, the school, school settings indoors. So it, yes, I, I agree. It, it's completely related to consequences. We don't have those consequences, so, and we had such a high compliance.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Hunter.
Yes.
I think we will, we will be revisiting a lot of this next week, but I think we're in a, in a strong place right now.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. So all this will get communicated out, starting today in the building. Chris goes to follow up with any other specific building based.
Now we are on to a Concord School Committee, the capital project and fire updates.
Great. So I'll start with the, with the capital. So we continue to be in, in great shape, hitting all of our, our timelines, starting with the well over at Willard. Really no update since I last reported at the last school committee meeting. The phase one is complete. We drilled down to 400 feet, yielding about 35 gallons per minute. Phase two right now is being engineered for the bid. We expect that to be done by the end of this month, the engineering part, and then we'll bid that out through our, the people that we're working with, and then that should be back sometime in October. And then we can figure out what needs to be done and if it has to be done when school is not in session, or if we could do it when it is in session. So more to come on that. The Willard boiler exhaust, that is still on schedule to be completed before the, before school starts, so that's really good. The chiller, that is complete. The energy recovery units at Alcoa, those are now 90% done, just the control work. And then we're scheduling some training for the custodians and maintenance staff, so that's excellent. And then the, the RTUs rooftop units over at Ripley, no update, no change, we're just engineering for the, for the bid, and we'll have more information once the grant application gets filled out in the midst of it. Then the Knox Trail, the water line, we have given Western at Sampson, we've been working with them, the PO for the feasibility study. We're continuing to meet with the engineers to discuss the water reclaim system, so that's still ongoing. The electrical charging station, engineering is in progress. And then we did install, lastly, a, a large fan in the garage, which wasn't necessary, necessarily a capital project, but just wanted to give you an update that that is now complete. The, the mechanics are extremely happy for that. So any questions on, on capital?
You know, forgive me, because I, I don't remember, Jared, on Ripley, your reference to a grant.
Yes.
So this is the one that is not coming out of town, capital budgeting?
Correct. So this is the portion that we, so to, to get this grant, we had to do the engineering, it wasn't part of that. So we did budget for that piece.
The green period.
Thank you very much. Perfect, thank you.
So a little bit, a little fire update?
Sure.
So I sent a, just a little email last night, pardon the, the late, the late email. So as of right now, we, it is completely demoed, and I'll give you some pictures even today, I'll send some pictures out. The demo is completely done. All the salvage items have been, the salvage and non-salvage items have been reviewed by all the teachers. Everything has been brought to their temporary space. The teachers have been coming in since last week to getting their, getting their temporary spaces all set up. They're continuing to do that. Everything that is not going to be able to fit in those spaces have been moved back to the pods, and they'll be on site until, until that we can move them back in. We expect, so that, as I said last time, the cabinets are going to be the issue. They were able to get the Asbeld drawings that we had from 1994, and we think that they can use those. And they came out and they measured the cabinets. All, seven of the eight of the, seven of the eight cabinets were these, not salvage. So, and my understanding is just they built these out of Canada, and then they bring them back in. So we think that the construction is going to be done before those cabinets are ready. So we will be getting, we'll be getting temporary cabinets so we can start moving teachers in, hopefully, in just moving the temporary wall, so we can have a couple of classes when they finish with the temporary wall, they can work on two more, and then keep moving. So hopefully getting people in fairly soon. And I'll start having an update on the estimated construction time. I'm talking to them this week on that, and if they can get me that, I'll report that out as soon as possible. What else is there? So I am working, continuing to work with the insurance company on just the tiling. It's really the estimated loss. And then really the cause, I thought I'd know by now, but I haven't gotten this reported, just the cause of what functioned in the heaters. So we, other than them being somewhat old, we don't know that yet. We do know that the cause of the fire was the heater in the ax. We will be getting a 35 by 40 tent. In addition, we'll get two other tents for outdoor classroom space, but they'll have a 35 by 40 tent, but minus saying it's three walls. We can't get four walls, but the three walls, hopefully, you know, will keep them, keep them warm if we have to go into, you know, the colder months. Trailers, we're getting two office trailers that should be here, I'm hoping, before the end of the first week in September, but that's what they estimated. It's currently on another site, and then they're just moving it here when, when that's all set. So hopefully, we'll have two office trailers that will house the, the eight, eight teachers that were displaced. I think that is, that is it. I do have to give, you know, really, I have to give a shout out to the custodians. They've been, we had a case move out last, two Fridays ago, and then that Monday, they, all of the cases, equipment and materials were picked up. And then since that time, our custodians, as well as service master, have been just moving all the stuff all around, doing whatever the teachers have asked of them. So the custodians at the, at the row, they're simply amazing.
And I'll just piggyback on that, shouting out to the entire staff who are now managing more COVID protocols than we expected along this condensed space and room reconfigurations and really doing right by kids in the middle of all that. It's going to look like a little city out back by the time we open, and we're making it homework. So they're making it work because of their creativity and cooperation, so.
So most of the temporary classrooms are going to be in the cafeteria?
There are different spots throughout the building. Angel's done the work to sort of survey everywhere. One was in the, one is in the cafeteria, one in the library. They repurposed a room, a teacher's dining room that isn't really used for that. The list is pretty extensive. Some of them are smaller special education spaces, so we get more creative there. Angel's given up her office again for one of those to happen, and she's literally going to work out of a closet. So the, I can, I can send you the list.
No, the reason why I'm asking is for those spaces that don't set up with a projector and a screen, I know most teachers today depend on that very heavily.
Yeah.
So do, has every teacher had the ability to walk through and say, this is, I'm going to need something more than this?
Yeah, they've already been in setting them and giving us feedback on what they need and were responding.
I just know that the supply chain and such, it's, you can't just turn around and say, I need four or five more projectors installed tomorrow. Everybody's going to be laughing at you.
Yeah.
Because they're all booked solid, so, you know, just maybe people will need to move around to, to do a audio visual screen work.
Yeah, so they've been in and working closely with Angel and building level supports and letting Jared and Peter, anybody who needs to know what they need.
Good, okay.
Great, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Court, can you walk us through DEI Subcommittee?
I will do my best. Yes, what I'm going to do is share with you some comments I, I put together that have not been shared with my colleagues yet in regard to what we started last year around the DEI Subcommittee, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I'll simply read you some notes I put together. By way of background, when we started to discuss this in early spring of this year, the committee, Subcommittee idea, the concept imagined membership and participation by a number of constituents from the schools and the community. Since that time, with the expanded DEI efforts from a number of community groups and the formation of a commission by the Concord Select Board, in addition to the multiple initiatives by school-based groups and those led by our administration, a smaller and more targeted Subcommittee is in order. So I say that by way of my recommendation, take a different shape than we intended. So let me continue. The school districts, towns, and communities are pursuing a number of DEI initiatives. The schools have been addressing DEI objectives for years, and that's not an overstatement. And the work has intensified recently, coinciding with a nationwide call to address persistent inequities and their toll on minority groups. In our schools, there are a number of indicators that reveal these inequities. The challenges of meeting diversity hiring goals relative to underachievement, relative underachievement by minority students, and repeated reports of race-related incidents that marginalized Black, Brown, and Asian students, to name a few that are most evident and acute. The school committee is encouraged, I'm speaking for myself here, forgive me, by the leadership of the administrative team, I trust my colleagues would strongly agree, including the superintendent and assistant superintendent, principals, DEI director, and the students and faculty who have organized in different ways to address and overcome racism and other forms of discrimination within the school community. It intends to increase its attention and support, that being the school committee. And now, a statement about this committee and what it might look like for your consideration only. The school committee Subcommittee on Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion will inform and advise the school committees on how to best meet the district's DEI goals and objectives through policy, budget, and engagement with the superintendent of schools. It will report to the school committee quarterly, or at least quarterly, you might say, providing well-informed recommendations for policy and budget with emphasis on how the committees may affect change. Particular attention will be devoted to a greater understanding by the school committee as to quantitative and qualitative measures used to guide district efforts and monitor progress. In addition, it will guide efforts within the school committee to ensure that its members more fully recognize and understand underlying causes of underachievement and systemic discrimination, and the, their role and responsibility as educational leaders. The Subcommittee will be comprised of three members, Concord, two, and number Carlisle, one. Will advise and recommend to the school committee its formal charge and mission by, suggest to you, no later than January of 2022.
Thank you, Court, for, for all of this work and for moving this forward. I think you, you really highlighted a good focus for the, for the committee to begin looking at.
Sarah, what, what I think it does is it, it expresses the fact that we do not want to distract from the other initiatives underway that are critical. We don't want to enter this space in such a way that we, we take up any of that attention or, or activity elsewhere.
No, I, I think, I think you did a good job articulating what is our, what is within our purview, really, right? What is our charge? And, and where should our focus, where, where could our focus be directed from the beginning, especially with the hiring goals, the underachievement, and a look at the incidents, and how we can align budget and policy and engagement in those, in those efforts?
Yeah, and I think, I personally took a sort of a idea from the Select Board, the way they're sort of setting up their DEI commission with allowing them to really dig in and, you know, develop their charge, you know, instead of the Select Board sort of telling this group exactly what they should do, which I don't think they know exactly what they should do. Now, our purview, as you just stated, is more narrow because of our duties and responsibilities, but policy and budget does give us a fairly broad purview anyway. So that's why I would like to allow our Subcommittee really to develop their charge, as Court stated. And I think that's a good part of the work.
Yeah.
And it, it might change, but I think allowing that sort of deeper thought and And collaboration, which we just don't honestly have the time to do at our full committee meetings.
Yeah, and I, and I think I want to speak a little bit about the size of the Subcommittee. I know that we've gone back and forth about. How to, you know, how to, who to involve in these conversations, and these are such. Critical, broad-reaching conversations that impact everybody. And so while we, while our Subcommittee starts small, I would welcome. The meetings maybe to be in a Zoom format to allow accessibility and. An engagement with the community at large through these conversations.
Absolutely. And staff and students.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, right, anyone, anyone who, who, because this, this, we do need to hear from. From different constituents.
Yes, this isn't a closed door.
This is not a closed-door conversation. It couldn't be and shouldn't be. I want to, I would encourage a move towards the most transparency. Possible.
And I think we could argue and then prove that. By virtue of the fact that this is not a group to be formed with. Oh, let's say ten representatives from X, Y and Z, we in fact have opened up this forum to everyone. And haven't had tiers of participation.
It's more inclusive.
Yeah, yes, it can be and should be by virtue of this.
I think so. We're not, we're not saying, okay, this voice is right, or this, this first, this group, or this representative, or. We really want to, I mean, Zoom this year has really allowed us to. To, to access information and input from so many more members of the, of the community. And I think that is a great takeaway and something that makes us stronger going forward.
I have a quick question. The meetings of the Subcommittee, will they be happening during the day or in the evening? And, and a quick follow-up, do we have a plan on. Spreading the word to the parents of the high school students? Often, a lot of emails will go out to the students to get engaged in. In areas. Of school life and often parents might not. Have those on the radar.
Yeah, from my point of view, every student who can get email. Who, that's a.
We just have to get, we've agreed it, but yes.
You know. I think if they get emails from the principal that they're supposed to read. That this will be included in that communication or targeted, I don't think our kindergarteners get an email, so. So, and I think the question about day or evening, I don't know, and I think maybe we should have. Mix it up so that those people who can do something during the day, but our students obviously couldn't join us. During the day, so that, that sort of eliminates a huge part of our.
Right.
Population, so it might be afternoon, evening thing, in my opinion.
Yeah, I know. I think once we decide on our members and, and all that, we see what works with schedules and. And I do think mixing it up a bit would allow, just to reach more people again. Right, that's the goal. So we could alternate, right?
Yep.
A morning, an afternoon, an evening, a morning, afternoon and evening, or.
Yeah, just eliminating our teachers and students.
Right.
That's a consideration.
That's a consideration.
All right. So I know, you know, everybody didn't have this material in front of them until, or this sort of conversation, we didn't really. Set it up with written materials for everyone. What are people's thoughts about moving forward with the makeup of the Subcommittee and this approach?
Comment, and having read it, I have now sent it to the School Committee, to Lori and her team.
Thank you, Court.
Any thoughts from our remote participants?
As I said before, I would love to be on this committee because I do think that this is definitely a passion of mine. I have the time to devote to this. And I do think I have relationships with. Concord parents and Boston parents that we could really actively engage our parents with this work.
Excellent.
Thank you, Tracy.
Yeah, I mean, just having heard all of this for the first time at. First glance without really taking any time to. Review the ideas. At first glance, it seems fine. I don't really have any. I don't have anything meaningful yet, because I just haven't had any time to think about it, but at first glance, I think it sounds good.
I would note that what I share doesn't confine or dictate to this committee at all.
No, it sets the table and. And it's a good starting point for.
Now, we do have on the agenda later in the meeting a vote to appoint. Members to this Committee. Do people feel comfortable with moving it? I'd like to get this group launched as quickly as possible. But if people don't feel comfortable moving forward today, I certainly understand that.
And we can also revisit the members or the.
Yes.
Right, the position.
Sure, yeah.
To or. Based on people's availability or bandwidth and. Do we need to formally form the Subcommittee? Do we need to vote on formally forming the Subcommittee as well?
It could be absent a formal charge.
Yeah, well, absolutely.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But we do need to.
So we have one more action item. If people are comfortable moving forward.
Right.
With that.
I would hope we move forward with a Concord and a Carlisle rep and I would. Recommend leaving one seat open until all members of the School Committee have been consulted on this.
Okay, understood. That's a, that's a good way to proceed.
Yep, thank you, Court.
So we'll move on through the rest of our items and we'll add another vote. To form the Committee during our action items, is that.
That's correct.
Agreeable, okay. All right.
Okay, so Cynthia, would you like to take us through the Concord Finance Committee guideline request?
So perhaps somebody could share it.
Karen's ready to share.
Yeah. So if other members of the Committee don't have this at their fingertips. Every year, the Concord, excuse me, Concord Finance Committee sends us a guidelines request. And if you've ever seen a prior guidelines request, this is quite a bit shorter than prior requests. Usually there have quite a bit of detail on specific outline items, but sometimes they might be those. So they have, I would say, reduced this to a much more open sort of request, and I think. They're depending on the receivers to sort of. Understand that they're looking for the top three to five strategic issues, challenges or opportunities. That the Concord or Concord Carlisle schools are facing. And so I myself had a trouble with coming up with those if. So perhaps in a future meeting, you can report on what you think those are, looking out five years. One thing I think is not difficult to do is, are these projections? So they're looking at projections for the next five fiscal years, so going out to twenty-seven. We have just completed two contracts with our. Teachers and that have specifics, so doing two years' worth of projections is going to be, I would think, fairly easy. And then our smarter, smaller bargaining units, we have a similar, maybe we have a couple of one-years. We could do that and then doing it with our operating budgets, you can let us know the. Ease or difficulty of doing that. We've never done five-year projections, obviously, so that's maybe for a conversation later. Though I thought, I looked at the deadlines and I think we need to have something in front of us that we can do analysis on. At the end of September meeting, but it would probably be good to have a conversation before that if you're thinking some of this work is. More difficult than I, we anticipated to be. The other thing that would be a change or an addition is doing a five-year capital plan at the region. Which they're requesting. I don't know, it doesn't have to be packed with stuff. We have a relatively new building, but I know we do have needs and wants. On the campus itself. So maybe we could just sort of look at what we think those are and perhaps sort of show us in the community what we might have done over the last two years. To improve the campus and the costs associated with that. So those are my two cents, having read this document a couple of times. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
If I may just add to that.
Sure.
So the good thing is, is we met with the Chair of Parrishaw of the Guidelines, as well as Kerry LaFleur. Stephen Kramer was also involved. The good thing is, is pretty much everything that they ask for, this is definitely a shortened version. We do in what we call our Fall Budget Book, which we're going to still continue to do. So we're going to still produce our Fall Budget Book, give more information than they want because it just builds on, you know, the, the Spring Budget Book. And then such as, you know, we give five years, we give twenty years' worth of OPE, what we know. We give the five-year capital plan at CPS. We give the budget updates, FY twenty-one versus FY twenty-two, actuals versus budgeted. We even give, you know. Busing, the year-to-date of buses, the mileage, everything. So while the difference this year, we'll be giving the five-year projections, I've already done it in a way. They want a very high level. They do not want, you know, to the penny, they want, you know, what is the estimates? So what they're looking for on or around October fourteenth, we'll get to that information well beforehand. It's sort of a. A much shorter, shortened version of my regular presentation with the couple added, you know, such as the five years and the five-year capital plan at the high school, so. I do feel this is already manageable. We will certainly let you know sooner or later if there are going to be any holdups or any issues. We are still in the process of closing out FY twenty-one and until we close out, we really can't get started on. On some of the big stuff. So we should, we should be closed out, I'm hoping. Before the end of the month, which is, which is normal. So, so yeah, I welcome this to be. Future agenda items, but I do not see an issue with this as well as the four or five big. Buckets that they want to see things growing on.
Right, and I think it's. It's because of the contracts and. We know what they are. I think it's important to show that flow of teachers in and what we think teachers out and. I mean, the date of hire is what longevity is based on, correct?
Date of hire, yes.
Yes, so we know everybody who's in the system, their date of hire and when they're going to be coming ten years and. You know, we can say, okay, we can project two to go out. Of the thirty-year, you know, what, however we want to do it, but, you know, with our current staff, I think we can, because those longevity numbers are. Significant and we need to show the community what it will look like in FY twenty-seven as best we can. FY twenty-three, twenty-four.
I mean, all be built on a lot of assumptions.
Well, no, just what we do.
And as long as we can just show the assumptions, we're probably going to be projecting higher than actual, just because. Usually there's more than anticipated and we're going to be. Conservative on that, but yeah.
We're just showing the data based on blah, 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 you know.
I would echo what both of you are saying in regard to the, the assumptions. The numbers are going to speak for themselves. The, the assumptions, teachers in, teachers out, for example, replacements, if you will. What retention might be and so on, and what might happen post-current contracts. If we have to look at five years, is again going to be assumption-driven.
And pull out.
That narrative is going to be critical, I think.
And anybody, you know, the spreadsheet gets put in, two percent below, two five, two five.
School in the five years. Wishfulness.
Yeah, so yeah. That'd be great.
That's the plan.
Yeah, that is the plan for that.
Are there any other questions?
Anybody remote, do you have anything to add or question? Okay.
Great. Then I think we can move on to new, where are we? Warrant approval process. There we go. Jared, can you, can you give us a little?
So. I will say the transition to the new members has been seamless. We, we have, so right now. So the, we require three signatures at CPS out of the five to. To pass forward to the town and then at the high school, School Committee signatures, we require four. It's customarily been, you know, three from Concord, one from Carlisle. What we do right now is we have been sending it out to the entire committee. In Concord, Court, Cynthia and Tracy have been responding. And then at the high school, it's been Court, Cynthia, Tracy and both Eva and you, Sarah, have been responding.
Yeah, because we haven't quite figured.
So that is the one, if you want to designate. That to the both of you. I think, especially the new members, I think they have a good grasp now of what they're looking for. Or what, what they're supposed to be looking for. And, you know, people can answer, ask some questions and I know that the team has been responsive, so. Do you want more clarity? What are you looking for?
I think we just wanted to give an opportunity for anybody to ask any questions about the process. And also just to flag that from the region side, when we seated. The new committee last time, we actually didn't appoint our signatures, so we just needed to, with some housekeeping. Yep, so does anybody have questions about the process? No, we're, we're all up to, up to speed now, okay?
Maybe this is just rhetoric, but I don't want to share it anyway. We have a responsibility as stewards of community funds for schools and as such, we ask questions. And I continue to be. Very, very pleased and impressed with the. The ease and facility with which your staff will respond to those questions or, or forward it to somebody. I think I speak for my colleagues when I say we don't want to nitpick, but we do want to understand. And your response has been nothing short of exceptional, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
And, and just to clarify too, sort of how the process works just very quickly. So there are a number of eyes that see this before you get to it. From the originator, who could be a secretary, to the principal approving it, to our accountant. Approving it, then to me, and then it goes to Dr. Hunter, and then it goes to you. So there are. Four or five always sets eyes on this, so. There's really nothing we shouldn't be able to answer, so.
Yep, I'm asking a quick question. So last year, of course, these weren't sent to the whole committee and I recognize that we appoint someone, will, or we appoint a group to approve the warrants. Even if we move forward in approving said group, will we still be, will we still make it our norm, I guess? To send to the whole committee so that we all review or will that sort of go away?
Everybody should see it.
Okay, great, awesome, thanks.
Everybody at the School Committee should see it.
And that has, that has a number of. Purposes. One is we all stay equally informed, but two. Should one of the approved drop off the radar and Jared's in a hurry, he can reach out to the other committee members.
Correct.
Oh, great. I was hoping that. I just didn't know because, you know, it's only my second year.
And this is the benefit of having moved to an electronic process because it wasn't. Go, we were handing people folders at meetings and trying to get people in and now you all have accessibility to, which is excellent.
Great.
One last thing to clarify, my apologies, I think you all know this, AP, accounts payroll, we can hold up checks. We do not send anything to the town or mail any checks until we get the three or the four signatures. Payroll, we cannot hold up unless it's a supplement. So just to let you know, and we usually get it out to you, you know, I know it went out yesterday for Thursday, so we give. Usually give forty, forty-eight to seventy-two hours, but just wanted to clarify that in case there was any questions on that.
And I will say, as a new member just jumping on, Kristen was very helpful, meeting with me via Zoom and just explaining the process, so. I think that's what's helped it go a little bit more quickly. So thank you to Kristen.
Kristen, that's, she's out.
Thank you. Okay, so on to action items and we have a few more. I'd like to, following on Jared's, I'd like to add a vote to. Appoint our signers, our warrant signers from the region. We can. Take care of that. And so Jared, just remind me.
So right now at Concord, we have Tracy, Court and Cynthia. And then same three for the region and then. And then same three for the region and then between you and Eva.
Yeah. So Eva, if you're, if you're happy to continue doing that, that would be fantastic.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And I just wanted to add, Chris has been very, very responsive with any questions that I had regarding warrants. Thank you.
Great. So we have a motion to accept Cynthia, Tracy, Court and Eva as the warrant signers for the region.
So moved.
I'll second.
A roll call.
Anderson, aye for both.
Move aye for both.
Marano, aye for both.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for region.
Wilson for region. Thank you. Okay, so that one. And now we can go to the vote to approve the change in the CCACE Advisory Board membership.
I can speak to this briefly. Jill Weintraub, Director of Adult and Community Education, has let you know that Ron Bernard has resigned his seat. And according to the bylaws, the regional school committee is expected to appoint a successor for the remainder of the term. Jill and the current chair have named Barbara McGee, local resident and known retired Concord public school teacher to the, I believe it's a year that's left. So that's their nomination. And with your vote there, Barbara and Jill Slidery.
Great.
I'll entertain a motion to appoint Barbara McGee to the remainder of Ron Bernard's term on the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, roll call.
I want to speak to her.
Oh, sorry, I think I.
First, I want to express our thanks to Mr. Bernard. This is his second term. I think he's been with the committee for probably fully five years. Secondly, over many decades, it's really been demonstrated that having people familiar with Concord and Concord Carlisle classroom activities, i.e. teachers and retired teachers have been really beneficial to the advisory committee. Third, just for new members, I'd want to note that the advisory board was initially set up decades ago to advise the school committee on matters of community education policy. But in point of fact, that's really not necessary right now. This has been a program that's been functioning for over half a century. And so the committee, it's not a board, it's a committee, just to be particular here, really advises and works with the director and her staff on matters of program and community outreach. I don't think that requires any shifts or change on our part, but just as practical matter, know that they're not routinely advising us on matters of policy. And then finally, I believe the terms are three years following the, the norm or the practice of two terms and then try to rotate off such that we might see other recommendations for appointments in the future. Because I know Jill is fully on board and well-versed in how it works in district. I think this is what year five for Jill, the program's going. I think you would echo this, Kristin, very, 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 very smoothly and maybe COVID transition.
Yes. Another environment where Zoom will be a long-term plus.
No, they're not giving it up. Their outreach, their footprint has gotten better, not smaller, you know? So again, go back to what I said first, our thanks to Mr. Bernard for his service.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, and thanks to Barbara McGee for taking up the charge. Yeah, great. So any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Anderson, aye.
Move aye.
Marano, aye.
Mustafi, aye.
Rainey, aye, is it for both, regional? That's okay. Thank you.
And Wilson, aye. Great. And then we have now a vote to approve face covering policy, ECFA, with the modifications, as noted earlier, the details about types of masks and updated references to align with MASC. Correct?
Move to accept. That's recommended with those changes.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I don't see any. Nope. Okay, great. Roll call.
Anderson, aye for both.
Move aye for both.
Marano, aye for both.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
And Wilson for region. So now I'd like to insert a vote to form a DEI subcommittee before voting on exens members. As discussed earlier, I have, and the subcommittee will formally, formally form a charge and it's outline its meeting plans and all of that stuff and and will hopefully, hopefully get started working.
Form a recommended charge.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. That we hope to get moving as quickly as possible. So is there a motion to form the DEI subcommittee?
I'm, I'm moving to form a school committee, DEI subcommittee, serving both districts' school committees.
Good. There a second?
Second.
Discussion? No. Many thanks to everyone.
Very important work.
Yep. Roll call.
Anderson, aye for both.
Move aye for both.
Marano, aye for both.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson for region. With that, we can move to appoint DEI subcommittee members. However, as noted, we don't have all members in attendance. And so I might propose that the, the actual, the seating is for the, for Concord, as sort of Court indicated, for Concord School Committee points a member technically and, and the region appoints one and one, right? That ends us with two and one.
We do need somebody from Carlisle, so.
Right. Yeah, the region would need to point somebody from Carlisle, so.
Would I be too forward in moving that the DEI subcommittee include for the present time, for the region, Sarah Wilson? For the Concord Public Schools and School Committee, Tracy Marano? With the third seat, a Concord seat to be determined in the future.
Very good. I'd like to determine that in the next meeting. Yes, I like it.
Putting you on the spot, Tracy and Sarah. I think everybody is well suited to this work and I think that you bring the, the energy and the commitment that's going to be necessary. I'll echo what Cynthia said. This is important and it's going to require this extra effort that a subcommittee can perform for the school committee and for the districts.
Yes, very important.
Happy to do it.
Do we have a motion? Do we get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, good.
Discussion? Tracy has very nicely accepted. I, I accept. And I'm very excited to get started on this work. And we will note that, you know, that at the next meeting, we will vote, we want to have the committee formed as quickly as possible in its entirety.
Yes.
Yeah, on the 31st. We'll.
Good.
Grab the last one. Okay.
So we've given you a broad, very broad now charge or not charge, which I think is, is most healthy for you, for us going forward. So you can really sort of dig in, talk and roll around with a lot of things that we've been discussing as individuals and as a committee and, and see where that takes you.
You know, we're in the discussion now, put Kristin and Lori on the spot and say, we be happy to hear any, any thoughts or opinions you have on this, even though it's school committee, subcommittee, it's a committee that's going to be working with and through you.
And other staff as well, you know, we.
Are in accordance and could help us shape it as we move forward.
I like the direction you went because it feels like it's going to morph to the needs we have that aren't getting done elsewhere or be a little bit of a spoke to all of those needs. So I think we, I like what I heard today and we can work with where your priorities will be the discussion and where you want to put the time first. But it will be a nice hub for all the work that's going on. Because we're also about to start a CCTA group as part of the contract we just bargained. And the teachers work already with Kristin and Andrew. And I think, you know, there'll be a nice, nice place we can share out information and then hear. The school committee's support on all this work is so critical to the, to the, to not only the direction, but also to the, the importance that we're giving it.
Just.
Because we are going to get challenged along the way and questioned along the way. And I think we need to show that it's a priority no matter what. Yeah, no, I'm excited for those discussions. Anything you want to add?
Yeah, we're just, there are five communities running with educators, working on different aspects of what we're doing. And we have been supporting the work on, you know, our literature selection, more diverse, our hiring and so forth. So how can you do all that? And I think your work and our work will be carried on by our audit that we're doing this year. So we hope to start that in October and have results in January.
Good.
Great. Okay. Are we ready to vote? Roll call.
Anderson, aye for both.
Move aye for both.
Marano, aye for both.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
And Wilson for region. Thank you. And we have the signers. No, we did the signers. We did the signers. We did them before the CCAC. We did the mask with the modification. We did the committee and the committee members. I have no notes of other action items that we need to address today. So with that, I believe I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Can we get a second or just one sec?
Second.
I get.
Roll call.
Oh, yep. Anderson, aye for both.
Move aye for both.
Marano, aye for both.
Mustafi, aye for region.
Rainey, aye for both.
Wilson for region. Thank you very much.
Yes.
All right. Have a great day and see you next Tuesday evening, 7:00 PM.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
All meeting, weather. Bye.